Staff meetings, we talked about it. And the high school wanted it and middle school didn't want it. And it makes sense for their schools. Part is the coming and going in the high school so much for the middle school. We wanted to use your locker. So anyway, those are two topics, upcoming events. To get through this is teacher appreciation week. Thank you so much for PTSA and Ms. Hansel's round, all the other people that have worked so hard and showing our teacher appreciation. Every day this week they're feeding us, doing other fun stuff, so I really appreciate that. So thank you to those folks. We have a science trip at today to Boulder. We're looking at, I've approved, but we'll see if it actually happens, having a talent show later in May. So we'll see. Seniors last day, that's on here June 3rd. I did get an email from you, Mr. Becker, for handing out diplomas. We'll be working out on the graduation script. June 4th is graduation rehearsal. That is also the date they'll be doing a graduation walk. So we'll be coordinating with you, Mr. Koenig. They'll have to bring in their caps and gowns for a walk through the elementary school. Final day for online classes. Draw a line in the sand on that for our seniors. There's graduation promotion, so. Kind of rattled through quite a few things. What am I missing? What am I missing? Yeah. Any other questions at all? No? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to old business. Oh, yeah, sorry. Hannah has her part for moving on to old business. Sorry, I'll make a brief. Just giving you a brief update on the 2025 legislative session, which ended Wednesday, April 30th, after eighty-five days. Legislators received over eighty-five hundred messages regarding supporting education. And it had a big impact on passage of bills and funding reorganization for education for our state. So highlights of the legislation were the passage of the START Act, which was House Bill 252. I spoke to that earlier in the year. And that was the increased quality educator funding to fund teacher salary increases and legislate salary minimums for teachers. This is what our CBA matches, so that's the reason our CBA, our compensation for teachers has been aligned to the new state law to take advantage of that funding. House Bill 15 was, was the, this is the inflationary adjustment that is passed every legislative session. It has a cap of 2.4% increase from the state. And the legislature passed that 2.4% increase for the next two years. So that is the maximum that they were able to do, and they, and they did. One of the bigger positives was actually House Bill 515, which was the increase in the school major maintenance amounts. So we currently can levy fifteen thousand dollars or we receive from, I shouldn't say levy. We don't levy it from this, from local taxpayers. We receive from the state fifteen thousand dollars, which fifteen thousand dollars is a real drop in the bucket when you think about all the things that need to be done around here and what they cost. And you guys have all approved, been on boards approved, major projects here. And fifteen thousand dollars just really doesn't cut it. So they did increase that funding from the state to forty thousand dollars per district. So that would be forty thousand for elementary and forty thousand for high school. So that's actually something that's like a sizable amount that we can actually do something with. In addition to that, you get a current multiplier for school major maintenance. That's increasing from one hundred and ten to one hundred and fifteen per average number belonging. That's our student count. And then in order to prevent this from affecting local property taxes, the guaranteed base aid, which is the state money, is increased from one hundred and eighty-seven percent to three hundred and fifteen percent. So that's an additional twelve million increase in funding for major maintenance with no increase in local taxes statewide. So that would be very helpful for doing some of our maintenance projects that are on our strategic plan, which you will approve here shortly. Another positive was House Bill 168. Right now, by law, we are required to service children with disabilities starting at age three. So our three and four-year-olds with disabilities, we have done this for decades. This is not new. So these are students who receive like speech and occupational therapy and physical therapy. And this has been going on for years, but we have never received funding for them. So we were required by law to provide services to them. They do not attend school, but they are serviced through our, our staff. Well, now they will be providing funding to support that effort, which is great because of course, all of that costs money. And then House Bill 628. This is for fiscal year twenty-seven. So this will not occur next year, which is fiscal year twenty-six, but fiscal year twenty-seven. So two years from now, the legislature approved early numeracy to match early literacy. So kids can qualify for the four-year-old program based upon either literacy or numeracy. So recognizing that math is equally important to reading. They're expanding the scope of the availability of the four-year-old program, which also probably will potentially affect our staffing needs as we're growing that program. But again, that's two years out. And then House Bill 483. This was a big one, and you may have heard a lot about this particular one in the news because it involved taxes. So ninety-five mils is currently milled for, by the state for K-12 public education. But prior to this bill, it was, it was milled in such a way that districts, basically, some paid a larger share than others. And it really depended on your tax base, your, your, whether, how much it affected your district. So some districts that had less of a tax base had to generate more funds. And the ones that had a bigger tax base, like Whitefish and Big Sky, could generate less funds because they had more taxable valuation in their districts. This ninety-five mils is an equalization bill, so it ensures stability across the state. So for eighty-five percent of districts, there's going to be a property tax reduction because really it passes, it, it pools everyone's money differently. And it passes the effects of the ninety-five mils on to the districts that have more taxable value. So this, this, this bill was fought by, in particular, Big Sky, who was not happy that they would have to pay more taxes based upon their taxable valuation to help support schools across the state. But it has the effect of reducing taxpayers burden in eighty-five percent of districts. So if our district is actually quite good, our mills will go down. So locally, the effects will be positive. And that, those were, that's a recap of, of the major bills. There were smaller bills, and certainly if you're interested, I can share with you at a different time. In the interest of time, well, those are the highlights.
Any more questions? Okay, now we'll move on to old business. So the athletic expense report for spring.
Okay, so please, if you would, on your iPad, move to the spring sports expenses document. So we're just tracking this the way we always have. We're going to have final numbers for you by the June meeting so that we can really make a decision as to whether activity fees remain the same, need to change, and so on. I've been, you know, we've been tracking this all year. High school track currently has spent fifteen hundred dollars on travel. So basically equal with what we've collected for revenue. However, there are two biggest trips that are, are, are upcoming, which is to Loro for divisionals and then state track for Missoula. But depending on how many kids qualify, that may not be a huge expense. So we're in pretty good shape right now with high school track. Golf. We have exceeded our revenue by approximately three hundred dollars already. But the concerning thing is right now, we have trips to Euripen Shelby ahead of us, which include rooms and meals and travel. So that's one where we might end up fairly upside down and needing to consider whether we have activity, higher activity fees for that particular sport. But we are going to wait till we have all the data in June to make that decision. Middle school track, we're in good shape with participation. And upcoming trips, our revenues will match our expenses there. So really the two sports that are jumping out as potential issues and where we may need to increase the activity fees just in those two sports are wrestling, which I spoke to previously, and potentially golf. So these are just single sports that have high travel costs. And like the greens fees for golf are expensive as well. They just happen to our expenses. So we will review that and determine aside how to manage it. And where our bottom line is, but just keeping you on price of those numbers.
Do we have any idea of like overall in versus out?
So we do. So right now, right now, we're at like negative twenty thousand, but sixteen thousand of it is wrestling. So wrestling remains high in, in comparison to revenue.
Any other questions? Okay. Approve the final strategic plan for 2025 through 2028.
Okay, so you have seen this document before last month. You've had, you've all been a part of the committees and you've had the opportunity to review it in full. Are there any questions about it before? Any more motions to approve it?
We need a motion for the strategic plan approval. Moving to approve the strategic plan.
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll figure. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to new business. First is the Twenty First Century Program proposal, and I'll hand it over to Lindsay Maun.
Good evening, everybody. I am one of the coordinators for the Twenty First Program. Kristen Wirth is my aunt guard, which would make it easier to make for baseball. But thank you for making some time with us. Usually we try to get in once a year at least to try to get just an overall update on how we're doing. This year, we're excited to report that we have been awarded a new five-year grant cycle. It was effective this fall. So Kristen and I were on the grants and it was approved. So overall, our goal for that program, new funding was to establish the high school program, something we've never reached before. It's always been K-8 programming, increase family engagement, and prioritize art sessions for K-8 for other annual goals this year. So. Sorry. We were able to meet those goals successfully, so we expanded our programming in the middle school and then added on the high school. So we had a good variety of things that included weightlifting, the fencing club, and actors for the haunted house support, middle school student council, youth leadership program, sixth grade orientation, middle school and high school active Olympics, and high school esports. So with that, we were able to go from fifty-four six-eight students served previously last year to over a hundred and twenty-five for the whole six-to-twelve grade level groups. So we were excited about that. We have some unique opportunities and ideas coming up next year. We also increased our family engagement events. PTSA has been a big partner with us, and we kind of have worked together to support them. So some of these were separate and some were in conjunction with PTSA, the sixth grade parent night, PTSA ball carnival, the holiday literacy movie night, youth leadership showcase, after the Olympic competition, and then coming to go down on the seventeenth, that Mr. Koenig spoke about earlier. In K-8, we continue to offer a variety of sessions. Art was something that we made sure that we had in some form all year long. That might have been paracord they're doing currently, or it might have been some literacy tied in through our projects based on stories that they were reading, or it might have been art classes directly provided by Ms. Walter, for example. Art is something that we have found that our parents asked for more of with just the, some of the holes and shifting that into the schedules and stuff like that. So we want to thank you to several people, but the Twenty First staff is all school day staff in some form. So some of them are substitutes, some work in the kitchen, some are school counselors, some are teachers, some are parent professionals. So we've been really fortunate. That's not always been the case in the past where we've had a mandate of staff wanting and able to teach these programs, especially as we've expanded opportunities in the middle school and high school. You know, it's not one or two people that want to do those, so it takes a staff member that's willing to do that. So we really appreciate their continued dedication to it. Obviously, the custodians offer a lot of support, especially in the summer occasions, working around this. The administration, like we said, the PTSA, they are looking to help provide some materials for our sixth grade orientation this year. The community library is always a consistent partner. And then we work really hard to build other community partners throughout the school year, primarily in the summer programming locally and, you know, within our areas. So coming soon, the next week or two, we will be sending out signups. We have a couple of really exciting things we're trying to nail down. And we want to be able to offer signups by week this year so that parents can cater more to their own schedule, like they have camp being planned or other camps and things like that, that they're able to select week by week, which means they can attend. So we want to make sure that we're advertising accurately what activities and field trips will we help them. The picture is a nice little AI-generated preview with some airplanes and hot air balloons and archery and culinary things, farm visits, lots of stuff going on, so look for that. And there will be some sixth grade orientation activities in that final week. So again, please look for some details. It's going to look a little bit different this year than half the years past, but we will leave that a priority. And so that's our general overview. One of the things that we've figured out during our reflection, you have very detailed grant requirements that have a lot of data and analysis that go on throughout the school year. But one thing that has stuck out to us is that we feel like we're not optimizing our funds based on our current K-8 Friday program. So two years ago, when we switched to a four-day school week, we did several surveys. We've done several since then, and the community had indicated that having a half-day Friday program at least three days a month was a priority. What we have found is that it's no longer a priority based on who has attended. So we have an average of nine students attending over this year. It's very similar data from last year. We do have, you know, twenty, twenty-five up to thirty families that will sign up each quarter, but they're simply not coming. So things to note is two of those regular attendees are the children of a working staff member. So that staff member working, their kids aren't coming. So that's seven kids. Three of them are from the same family. So really, that's four families. There's one parent that comes with her son. So that's three families potentially that, you know, would be looking for alternate options potentially. But we just feel that it's not cost-effective. So I believe Mrs. Nieskens has already shared some specific numbers. But in general, we feel comfortable estimating that, you know, Friday program cost just for staffing alone, not including materials and activities, is about six times what the cost is for an after-school program per student ratio. So what we're proposing currently, we offer three days a school week for after-school programming from hour and a half this year, four to five-thirty generally from the bell. But and then on Fridays, three times per month, eight to twelve. So we're looking to shift the hours. It's the same number of hours total in one month, but it would be a shift from Monday through Thursday, which we think will better serve the working parents on, you know, when they're later to be able to contact their students if that's something that is a reason why they're utilizing our program. And then we would just have one special event once a month on Friday. That might be a STEM camp, or it might be a field trip to a pumpkin patch, or it'll just be a unique, more exciting opportunity for those students to be able to sign up for. So again, this is just another graph to show you the shift of hours. It's still thirty hours total per month of programming that we're offering, but the goal is to better serve our students and try to reach a broader number of students with our programming. Are there any questions on that? Or anything, you know, that was passed? I know you guys have lots to do. Okay. So then I would ask that you guys would approve, I believe it's an action item, the program hours for the operation for K-8 starting next school year, just to shift to the requirements. It is not a requirement to have that many hours. For our grant cycle, you know, we can, we can work with our director. We would need to shift those. That was written to our initial grant, but every year there's changes that we have to, to meet the needs of the community. We had what makes sense for this long heading. Thank you.
I move to approve the change in hours. Time to approve the change in hours. I'll second. Great. Any more discussion? Okay, I'll figure. We really need to make sure that you vote through. Okay, you got, you got a thumbs up for me, yeah. Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the updated certified CBA for twenty-eight.
Do I have to hire a litany person?
Oh, my gosh. Okay. I have the Twenty First Century Program Summer Staff. So we're asking you to approve for higher delivery. BG, Ruger BG, Carrie Crady, Megan Johnson, Casey Norbeck, Barbie Dyson, Cassie Edsel, Jerry Wolf, Kylie Hansen, Kristen Wirth, and Lindsay Maun.
I move to hire the Twenty First Century Program Summer Staff.
So this is an elementary only, I'm sorry. I'm motion to hire the Twenty First Century Staff.
I see.
Any discussion? I'll figure. There he goes, good. Okay, can you post? Okay, motion passes. Okay, now we go on to the updated certified CBA for twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Right, so you have some time to look over this. It does update the salary matrices to match the START Act minimum teacher salaries in keeping with the new legislation that I just visited with you about. It also updates some of our language regarding the hundred-dollar days. That will move to a hundred-and-twenty-dollar days. That hasn't changed in like a decade, so the increase is due. It also expands the opportunity to be two weeks prior to the school year instead of just one week prior to the school year. That helps accommodate our staff that goes to fairer, so that they can work that day anytime in the two weeks leading up to the school year instead of the one. And then we are recommending the update of teachers being paid twice per month. Instead of once per month, basically their check is filled into two and they're paid twice per month. This matches what we do already with our classified staff. The instructional day length is changed to match our calendar, and that occurred at the last calendar meeting. The, there are some provisions for elementary parent-teacher conference scheduling, and it removed obsolete language regarding sabbatical leave and medical leaves of absence. In particular, the medical leaves of absence didn't match federal Family Medical Leave Act law, so it wasn't compliant with law. So those were just obsolete provisions that had been there for a very long time. It updates the schedule of liquidated damages for teachers who break contract, and it addresses teacher compensation if elementary teachers get combined or doubled up if, if the partner teacher is on extended leave. So those are the updates to the CBA. And the union and our team worked hard on this, so I would recommend.
My soul.
I'll second that. Any discussion? I'll figure. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We remove the problem.
Here.
Okay. Opening the bidding process for a busing and transportation contract.
So White House School District has had a longstanding contract with Harlow Transportation. Generally, those, those transportation contracts are renewed on a five-year cycle. State law states that if the renewal or the contract amount exceeds twelve percent, that we cannot automatically renew the contract, and it must go out to bid. Harlow's management has informed us that, and this is upper-level management, not local management, upper-level management has informed us that they, due to the increase in costs that they've had through COVID, because our, our current contract was negotiated prior to COVID, and expenses that have increased so dramatically for them that they cannot stay within that twelve percent allowable, and it will exceed that amount. And so we, it is necessary for us to put it out to bid. It's not a choice, we must do that. And so I recommend opening up the bid immediately. The closing deadline will be May twenty-seventh. We will post the bid documents on our website and advertise them locally and attempt to solicit multiple tenders to bid. Ask for a motion to allow us to open bidding process for a busing and transportation contract.
I move to open the bidding process.
I'll second that. Any discussion? I'll figure. Okay, any opposed? Motion passes. Also.
Regulable, yes.
Regulable, yes. I will not, I was on that committee, and so we're asking if somebody else would be willing to be on that committee for.
So Regal's on the committee.
Regal's on the committee, and I was on the committee, so. Can you watch that?
I did.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Chad. Okay. Next item is to hire classified staff. Okay, so you have the list. Files there. Hold on, one second. Yeah, perhaps. So Golden Anderson, Sarah Bates, Jennifer Bevout, Ruger.
BG.
BG. Brianna Cameron, Alyssa Christensen, Robert Dyson, Cassie Edsel, Sheila Essire. Sorry?
I'm sure.
Sure, thank you. Stephanie Cracher, Krista Glass, Kim Howell Nerlin, Mark Leinert, Christina Lucas, Leo Mastus, Lindsay Moen, Kristen Moriarty, Brianna Ostrander, Barbara Peck, Jennifer Freeghost, Scott Freeghost, Julie Ramsey, Aubrey Sal, Jason Silvani, Trish Scarborough, Stormy Wuster.
So just before we approve that, it is of note that we have two retirees this year who have spent a long time in this district and don't, and not donated, probably feels like donating, but have spent thousands of hours with our students. And, and those two particular people that I'd like to recognize are Sheila Martin and Yolanda Ivey, who have been invaluable members of our, her professional team with our special education students. And they are, they have a well-earned retirement ahead of them. I'm happy for them that they're going to enjoy their retirement years. However, it will be a loss to our district. They are, they are great team members and highly skilled at what they do. So we will miss them, but they certainly, I'm sure, have, are looking forward to their attendance. So I'd ask you to approve the classified staff list as listed, please.
I move to hire classified staff. Second.
Any discussion? I'll figure. Any opposed? It goes to the yes. Okay. Hire six-to-twelve science teacher, Kayla Hay.
So I'll turn this over to Mr. Slater, who conducted the interviews, for him to give you a brief update on her.
So Kayla was outstanding. She's originally from Rainbow, Alaska. She's a 2023 graduate from Montana State. BS in secondary education, general science, broad field with a BA in modern language and literature. She's currently over in Germany teaching English. She's done that the last two years. She's very interested and wanted to be in southwest Montana and Montana. Excited to come back stateside. She enquired and has recently interviewed for volleyball coaching position. She, it's great, you know, a lot of times we find ourselves in positions where we're influencing people to throw their hands in the hat, and she was seeking and wanting to do these extra things. So besides that, we're not hiring her to coach, but I'm excited that she wants to coach. She was a great science teacher back in the day when we. Uh, she was a great science teacher back in the day when we had thirty apps. She's still a great, goes to the top, uh one of the top interviews I've had. So I'm excited to meet her and bring her into our uh, our science program. So in addition, having the multiple endorsements, we've really been lucky that way this year. Uh, if we, if she ends up wanting to teach another class in foreign language, uh she has the potential to do that and a fully accredited staff. So, yeah, excited to bring her in. Uh, Kristen Merk was involved as well as our middle school. She's got a great vibe, we're already communicating a little bit back and forth. Uh, so, yeah, I'm excited and highly would, highly recommend, Miss Kayla Hay.
Your motion?
I move to hire Kayla Hay for the twenty-five and twenty-six year.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Any votes? Okay, motion passes.
Did she say where Bavaria? She said, I'm curious.
Um.
Was there a place that located?
Yeah, she did. I didn't, I didn't tell you, I bet you that I can't, I would talk, well, no, she did, she did share that with me, but I can't remember.
Eli needed to show Bavaria, so she's curious where they were.
Yeah, I'll, I'll leave a little bit of that for the committee here.
Okay, and then hiring high school English teacher for the next year. Jason?
Super excited about this one too. So I am, I am. Uh, so Jane Jimmy Lewis, he actually wrote that following narrative. Uh, he graduated in Maryland. He was actually a state champion at the shop, but uh went to, wanted to get to Bozeman, wanted to come to Montana. His folks moved with him to Bozeman, uh plays football for the P C S for a couple of years. But he's one of these kind of uh really unique individuals that uh he's into sports, but he loves fine arts. I believe his wife is actually a sculpture artist sometime. So, right, so loves English, loves English language arts, loves our area. He dirt rides, how awesome is that? I mean, this guy's super cool, dirt rides over pipe zone, uh likes snowmobiles. He's just a great fit. And on top of that, he loves English language arts, reading, writing. He is way more, that is his interest, that is his passion. Uh, he's taught fifteen years previously in Belgrade. His references are very, very good. He left and did a podcast for a couple of years. He's also an outdoor guide. He does upland bird hunting and fishing, uh guiding, which guiding obviously is a, a popular getting in Montana. Uh, he loves Montana, he loves southwest Montana. They bought their place in Bozeman back in, I think it's ninety-seven. Him and his wife have loved to, they're looking at, you know, initially he's planning on driving from Bozeman, but they're looking at wanting to relocate outside of the Galton to get back to a rural setting. His first teaching job, actually, I believe, was really small school, I want to say in Vernis, something like that. And then uh he just really feels like he wants to get back to what Montana was all about. So awesome interview, highly recommended. Everybody from our old, uh, the guy did their professional development, Mr. Yost, I don't remember talking about him. He did that through the writing grant a couple of years ago. Uh, definitely check him out. Besides that, he killed his interview, did a really good job. So excited to come and be part of the team and another, this is another certified teacher, fifteen years experience, ready to hit the ground running. I was nervous about this one and I think we really, we really landed a great candidate.
We have a motion? I move to hire an English teacher for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
That's it.
Any discussion?
Have a side note. Another one of our people, remember John Alon, you guys hired last month. Uh, Mr. Silvani recently told me he has reached out and wants to do speech and debate. So for the first time in many years, we're looking to have a speech and debate program this year, so I just uh toss that.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Alright.
Any votes?
Rico was a yes. Okay, um, it was Trostburg, Bavaria.
Awesome.
Trostburg, yeah.
Okay, um, we need to approve the Jackson County to run a spring twenty twenty-six school election if that is to occur. So we can.
Please approve it so that Alyssa does not have to run our school election. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Alright.
Any votes?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, we need to approve the things and accounts, so we will start with the elementary claims and accounts. I move to approve the claims and accounts for elementary.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any votes?
Rico was a yes.
A yes, okay. Um, high school claims and accounts. I'm going to approve the high school claims and accounts.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Rico was a yes. Any votes? Motion passes. Okay, um, for adjourn, for the next uh reorganization meeting, um, we just need to appoint somebody to run the meeting as I no longer be here. So um I would like to appoint Mark Donald to run that reorganization meeting.
Yeah, that's not.
The board of directors. So, okay, we need an action item to adjourn the board meeting. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Any votes?
And so Rico's down the line because we're doing the reorganization meeting immediately. So just give us a minute to stop, stop.
So if we can.
Uh, please, I send you all.
Yes, yeah, please, thank you.
Alright, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we need to acknowledge the school board's absentee vacancy and decide upon appointment and this is an action item.
You have um in your notes some language that has more specific recommendations regarding eligible requirements for this. So if someone could please um either read that or motion for that, I would appreciate it.
Yes, the board officially declares a vacation. Yeah, White Hill Elementary Trustee seat. Clerk Christiansen is asked to advise the vacancy, the matters of interest to be accepted through July fifteenth. Eligible community, community members may apply to be considered for appointment to the vacated seat for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. To be eligible applicants must be registered voters in result, in result, within the boundaries of the district. The board members will review the letters of interest before the August board meeting and formally decide and appoint persons to the vacated seats at the August meeting.
Right, so just for clarification, this is Janelle's seat. Uh, it's for the elementary school district. Um, and we will follow the procedure as outlined. So please, we need a motion to approve that.
I move to approve. Clear. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Any votes? Motion passes.
Yes. Okay, so we need nominations for the board chair, so this is a action item.
I'm gonna nominate James Wright.
I second. All in favor?
Alright.
Any votes? Rio, I don't see a little pretty unless I might have missed it. For James Wright for chair.
I'm just uh appropriate and nominate him.
Okay, sorry about that. Alright, thank you. Okay, we need nominations for board vice chair.
I nominate Rico Badassini. I second.
Any discussion? Rico.
I'm mine.
Okay, all in favor? Alright, any votes? Motion carries.
Okay, we need to appoint Clerk Alyssa Christiansen.
I move to appoint Clerk Alyssa Christiansen.
I second.
Any of those? All in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Any motion to adjourn?
I shall move.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Rico. Thanks for the. That would've been awkward. Especially when it's sitting.